The counsel on any item at this time. Hearing and under seeing none, moving on to item five. Item five is consent agenda. Take a motion.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
DeBora?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six, new business under item six. New business action, item one, fiscal year sixteen seventeen budget. At this time, it's time to close regular meeting and open public hearing on the fiscal year sixteen seventeen budget. I'll ask the clerk when the notice was published.
February twenty-sixth.
Have been any written or verbal comments for or against the budget?
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone? I guess at this time I'd like staff to make a report.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Very quickly, our budget numbers in front of the council shows revenues of seven million, six hundred nineteen thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars. Total expenditures, seven thousand, ninety-five dollars, excuse me, seven thousand, ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. There is capital projects in amount of nine hundred twenty-nine thousand, seven ninety-three, which is basically payment on the Rock Creek sanitary sewer and three hundred thousand in street repairs.
Anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against the budget? Questions from counsel?
No, I'd just like to add that, like we talked about before, that there's some items in there that need to come up for vote later on before. We, I know we have to have the numbers plugged in, so we'll plug the numbers in now, but we'll get a chance to say here and now on these items later on.
The tax rate is seven dollars and ninety cents per thousand.
That is, let's just make it clear. It's the same as it has been for a lot of years.
And this budget represents operating at a surplus.
Yes.
Prudent, given our position in a few, number, few different respects as we've discussed.
Agreed. Need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
DeBora?
Yes.
Mordini? Sergeant? Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B is consider motion to approve resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty, budget fiscal year sixteen seventeen.
So moved. Second.
Further discussion? Roll call.
DeBora?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item C, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand sixteen twenty-one, identifying certain fiscal year sixteen seventeen budget expenditures and their funding source.
This is a resolution that identifies items, major expenditure items that are in your sixteen seventeen budget and identifies the funding source, discounts as a, through our auditors, as something that they would like to see us do, especially with road use tax and local offset sales tax.
Any questions?
Motion approved. Item C.
Second.
Roll call.
Lane?
Yes.
DeBora?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two, consider motion to approve the fiscal year seventeen slash eighteen budget schedule. Carry.
This is a starting point. As we went through this last budget, there was, became quickly apparent that we need to do things a little differently. And with the budget process, we were actually start the seventeen eighteen budget process in June of two thousand sixteen with a quarterly meeting with the council as a workshop that each department will be bringing forth their needs, where they see their department going in the ensuing fiscal year. This will give time for council to ask questions, understand the need, urgency of each of the items that are brought up. In September, a similar council work session will be held where, again, we will be drilling down further and further in each department, looking at where each of the departments is going and having a full dialogue with the city council. In September, department heads will receive their budget forms and start working on the data. And for ease of council review, we will be putting those into three areas, which personnel costs, ongoing expenses, and those items that would be capital expenditures or areas that fall outside of the personnel costs and ongoing expenses. We will have a workshop on October tenth where we will be identifying council priorities and comparing those to what has been delivered and spoken to by the various department heads. In early December, after a budget workshop, which is held every year by the Iowa League of Cities, administrative staff will be putting together the incomes that we see, and we will now start to compare incomes and expenses with a January ninth council workshop with department heads to review how these items are coming together. We will have an additional workshop on February thirteenth where we will again present all the changes that have been made here today, be giving council the preliminary budgets for the seventeen eighteen, with hope to have on February twenty-seventh a vote for the proposed budget with a March thirteenth public hearing date. This starts early, but I think it takes care of some of the issues that are out there, which is basically what's in the budget and communication back and forth is whether or not it is a priority for the council, and it allows them to directly speak to each department head.
I think it's great, but it gets, allows a communication, again, we've talked about it for a little while, but having the dates can always take time away if we are, we all feel good about it, but having the dates set right away is important, so thanks for doing that.
Yeah, I would agree. I think it's a definite step in the right direction, decompressing essentially what we did in two months, out to six, and I think it strikes the right balance, being fair to the different department heads hopefully and fair to us as advocates for this, right?
Excuse me, I think this is definitely what we needed. It's gonna, no doubt, put more burden on our finance department to have these figures and get them forward to us, but I, as competent as they are, I know that we'll get them to us and it'll definitely make our job easier, even though we'll probably include more hours.
Just take it out of your retirement.
Yeah, because it's huge right now.
I'll take a motion.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
DeBora?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three, presentation by Metro Waste Authority for yard waste collection from the curb. Floor is yours.
And a quick worksheet here. A little homework. Well, thank you very much for me allowing me to come and speak with you guys for a few minutes tonight. My name is Leslie Earl Beck, and I'm with Metro Waste Authority. And as some of you may remember, last summer, there was some legislation that was passed that allows some landfills in the state of Iowa to consider whether or not they want to accept yard waste. And Metro Park East, our local landfill, is one of those landfills in the state that has the opportunity to decide whether we want to accept that material. And really, this presents a unique opportunity for the Des Moines Metro to take a step back and really investigate the way that we currently handle yard waste collection and determine whether, you know, after all, the way that we've been doing it really is the best way to proceed forward, or whether we want to consider the option to co-mingle yard waste and garbage together. Since legislation passed last summer, board and staff have been spending quite a bit of time diving in further, learning a little bit more about the topic. And as a result, at this time, staff has been directed to go around to all of the city councils in the area and give you guys a little bit more information so that you feel a little more familiar with the topic and ultimately can provide some insight, questions, feedback with Dan, who's our Metro Waste Authority Board Representative, and then he can go to the board later this summer, June, July is really our timeframe, and determine whether or not, you know, he wants to vote on behalf of all of you, whether the landfill should or should not accept the yard waste material. So the first thing worth mentioning is that this isn't actually the first time that our region has considered landfilling yard waste. Legislation actually passed back in two thousand three, but was ultimately vetoed by the governor at that time. And so there's a few things that have changed since two thousand three. One is actually the way that our landfill is regulated. We once adhered to a weight-based diversion program, so we were really incentivized to keep materials out and really looking at it based on how much they weigh. And we still operate to that for a certain extent, you know, we've got our recycling curbside recycling program, we've got the hazardous waste facility, so we still operate to the best of our ability to keep a lot of that material out. But this new environmental management system, our new regulation, allows us to take a step back and think a little bit more holistically about the way that our waste is being managed and ultimately how it impacts the environment, not just from an end standpoint, so this material can become something that's recycled, or this material can become compost, but to think along that process, what are the impacts that are at play in the, in the way that our water is impacted or our air quality as well. So there are a few things, like I said, that have changed. One thing that hasn't changed is that when yard waste breaks down, it creates methane. When that methane breaks down at the landfill, or when yard waste breaks down at the landfill and creates methane, we actually have a gas collection system in place at Metro Park East landfill, which collects that methane through a partnership that we have at Waste Management. We're able to put that electricity on the grid and use that for electricity for about ten thousand homes here in Central Iowa. So technology has improved, however. So since the initial legislation in two thousand three, we're now able to capture more of the methane than we once were through the technology advancements and allowing less for fugitive emissions. We've also had some change in our best practices at the landfill, so we all know that the commodity or the life of the landfill is something that we want to take into consideration. And actually, the way, just in the last year and a half or so, the way that we've placed the garbage in a cell and the way that we've compacted it has changed. And just within that period of the modifications that we've made, we've extended the life of the landfill by about thirteen years. So like I mentioned, we really have been sort of in an investigative mode, trying to learn more about what opportunities or challenges present itself as a staff and board. And so one thing that we've, you know, that has happened is, you know, obviously the law passed, and there's actually five, five landfills in the state of Iowa that are eligible to consider whether or not they want to accept yard waste. We've had a lot of conversations with haulers to figure out whether or not they're willing to amend their garbage contracts. Right now, the contracts they have in place simply say that they won't accept yard waste. So through conversations, we found out that they are all are willing to amend those contracts. Last, late last summer or early last fall, the board set a policy that we would not change the way that yard waste is collected through two thousand sixteen, so you guys know yard waste season is about, ready to start here in a couple of weeks. And so we're not talking about this season, we're talking about two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, or perhaps even beyond that. We've been asked a lot, okay, if one community starts to co-mingle, do we all have to co-mingle? Ultimately, the answer is no. You know, the board's going to vote June or July, and then it'll come back to your city council to determine how you all want to handle yard waste in Polk City. We would love for there to be a unified, oh, I don't know what I did. It has a lot to, it's something I said there, but, so ultimately, it would be great, thank you, if, as a region, we could make the same decision, we could move forward, and Metro would be able to continue to provide education, just like we do with recycling or hazardous waste, to guide residents on what to do with their material. Okay, there's also, there's something funky going on here. On page three, there's a map on one of your slides. And what this slide is supposed to be saying is that we've also been asked quite a bit about what other states are doing. And what we found is that twenty-two states have a full or partial landfill ban in place, so those slides that are, states that are in white, they don't have a ban at all. The ones that have a green cross-section, such as Iowa, has a partial ban, so that pertains to such an emerald ashore. We were to really be infested with a lot of trees, the compost facility wouldn't be able to handle all of them. We do have the opportunity in Iowa to landfill those trees if we need to. Those states that are in solid green have a full, no exception ban to not allowing landfill. We're in the midst of reaching out to some states to figure out what they have learned in this process, especially the states of Georgia and Florida. They, at one point, have separate collection, had separate collection, just like we do now, and transitioned away from it through landfills that also have gas collection systems. And so really wanting to learn what worked well for them, what hasn't worked well, if given the opportunity, would they make the same decision again? What was their public opinion? There's a few states that we've already talked to, so we're already starting to collect some information in some markets as well, so. So really, as we've gathered information, everything kind of comes back to what I call the three pillars, and it rests on environmental impact, public opinion, and financial. And so I'm first going to talk through some environmental impacts of what we've learned on this first slide here. There's two studies that have been conducted, one for the city of Des Moines in two thousand eight, and one more recently by Metro Waste Authority in two thousand fifteen. And here we have a side-by-side comparison of what those studies found, highlighting pros and cons of both separate collection and co-mingle collection. Separate collection, just like we have today, you know, you put your yard waste out of the curb, ultimately, it becomes this really wonderful, rich, natural soil amendment. You can put it on your lawn and garden, and just like we take vitamins as humans, it's kind of a good, a good vitamin boost for your lawn and garden. The co-mingle collection, on the flip side, has the opportunity to create electricity. One possible negative to this separate collection as we have right now is it requires a third fleet of trucks, so you've got your garbage truck, you've got your recycling truck, and you've got your yard waste truck right now. If we were to move to a co-mingle collection approach, we could reduce that third truck, the yard waste truck, and reduce the amount of greenhouse gas emissions by about eleven percent each year. On the flip side, the positive to separate collection is that it doesn't consume any of our landfill space. The yard waste is going to the curb, it's completely bypassing the landfill, and it's going to the compost center. Where on the other side, the co-mingle approach, it's anticipated that it could decrease the life of our landfill by about fifteen months, so we're talking two thousand sixty-six versus two thousand sixty-seven. Ultimately, there's a few things that aren't going to change, as Metro Waste Authority is concerned with the environment. Regardless of what we do going forward, Metro Park East currently has a compost facility at our landfill, and that won't change. It's really pivotal, pivotal to our operations to continue to produce the compost, we use it as cover in some landscaping projects out there, and so that will continue, so there'll still be composting here in Central Iowa, and we could make that compost available in bulk sale as well. About a year ago, we started a public education campaign for, to teach residents about the benefit of backyard composting or mulching their grass clippings. And this month, we are again really in the thick of promoting that, so we know that some people, we actually featured this at the Home and Garden Show last month, and we were shocked how many residents are really interested in managing their own yard waste in their, in their backyard. So we can have this debate all day long about what's best, separate collection, co-mingle collection, but ultimately, what's best for the environment is if people manage their yard waste in their own backyard, and it doesn't have to be transferred at all. Now, we know that that's not for everybody, and so ultimately, that's why we're still here to have that conversation. But we also are asked frequently, so is there any yard waste going to the landfill today? Yes, about nineteen thousand eight hundred tons of residential yard waste per year is going to our landfill. So how would co-mingle collection approach, co-mingle collection work? Really, very few changes would have to occur. Right now, residents pay for anything that's outside of their cart. Oftentimes, they go get a one dollar sticker, an extra bag or box, and so it'd really be piggybacking on that system. And so really, residents would treat their yard waste just like they do their garbage. So first of all, they start by topping off their garbage cart, so any space that they have, they can add in yard waste, or they can add, start with the yard waste and add garbage in. But if their garbage cart is full, either because they've already put the yard waste or garbage in, then they just go get a one dollar sticker, and they can adhere that to a black garbage bag, a brown yard waste bag, a bundle of sticks, a box, whatever it might be. And then if residents are finding that they are always filling that first cart, or they don't like to buy the sticker, haulers can offer a, or do offer a second cart, cart option. So I know you guys have the Compost-it cart program here, you don't have a lot of residents that are participating in it, but some do like that convenience, and so ultimately, that would still be made available to them. So we've, moving on to our public opinion piece here. So the second, the second approach, or the second pillar, there's two studies that have been conducted, again, Metro Waste Authority and the city of Des Moines, both did their own survey in two thousand fifteen, and a majority of residents in both survey responses found that residents liked the option of co-mingling their yard waste and their garbage together. So a majority supported in the, in the surveys. It's interesting to note that in Metro Waste Authority's survey, forty-four percent of survey responders are saying that they already are putting their yard waste in the garbage or they're burning it. The city of Des Moines found thirty-five percent of responders don't use the Compost-it program, and they didn't take it to the next step to say, okay, if you're not using it, what are you doing with it? So maybe they're backyard composting, we're not really sure. But again, you've got a side-by-side comparison of the preference for separate collection versus co-mingle. As far as separate collection goes, some residents just prefer composting. They like the idea that they're, they're putting their yard waste at the curb, and it's becoming this tangible product. They have a perception that that's better for the environment. On the flip side, some people with co-mingle collection like the idea that that's an input for renewable energy, and they have a perception that that's better for the environment. That's sort of a philosophical debate that people could, could fall on either side of the aisle there. In addition, for co-mingle collection, there's a perception by many residents that it's convenient, you just start by throwing your yard waste in the garbage. And the idea of year-round collection was appealing to a lot of people, so yard waste starts, first week of April runs through the end of November, but if there was an early spring, late fall, you forget to put your Christmas tree out, there aren't specific dates that you have to follow. So there's a lot that we learned through the public opinion research that we did. One was how to communicate about this pretty complicated topic to residents, what level of information that they liked, what words resonated with them, what was kind of confusing. And so as a result, we've started drafting a communication plan. We haven't gotten very far in that process, because ultimately, we're not really sure if it's going to go through or not, but because we know that we've been telling residents for twenty years not to put their yard waste in the garbage, we know we're going to have to undo some of the education that we've done if we're to move forward, so we have started some facts as far as the education component is concerned. So the big question, right? So how will it impact what I pay? Unfortunately, the answer is it depends, but I am going to give you more information than that. There's a lot of variables involved in determining how this will impact what residents are accustomed to paying. Do they have mature trees? Do they bag their grass clippings? How much garbage is already in their garbage cart weekly? And even how often do they do their yard waste, or do they do yard work? What we know is that the Compost-it program isn't working the way that it was originally designed. The Compost-it name was designed originally to cover the cost of collection and the processing of material, and we're not doing that right now. So our board and the cities may decide to ultimately move forward, just as they have with the Compost-it program, but that's probably going to leave our board with a little bit of a decision to make of how they want to move forward, whether they want to try and recover the cost of the program that's, that's losing some revenue right now, or would that look like an increase in tip fees at the landfill, which ultimately gets passed on to residents, their garbage rate, or maybe they want to increase the cost of Compost-it stickers, bags, or carts. I think that that probably would drive up the amount of people that are sneaking their yard waste in the cart. We already get some calls from people wanting to know why those brown paper bags are a dollar sixty, and so they were even more expensive, we might get more fee back from that, but not sure. So again, side-by-side comparison here. The separate collection, the Compost-it program like we have right now, is a pay-as-you-throw system. So if you have a lot of yard waste, you pay for it. If, for whatever reason, you don't have any yard waste, you don't pay anything for it. The co-mingle collection, on the, on the flip side, is a partial pay-as-you-throw system along with a flat fee. So because there's more material going in the garbage carts, they're going to weigh more, when the hauler takes it to the landfill, they're going to pay more because of the additional material. And so the haulers that we work closely with have assigned what that flat fee looks like in their community, and then residents would also pay for anything outside of the cart with those dollar stickers that we talked about. So we know that the average resident uses about ten bags per year, and so that's about twelve dollars and fifty cents per stickers. And so here's where it's a little more complicated in Polk City, since you guys have a lot of haulers, garbage haulers that you're working with. But Waste Connections indicated that they would need to assign a six dollar per year increase to residents for that flat fee. Waste Management indicated that they would need to increase fees by eight dollars and fifty-two cents per year, and Inconvenience Sanitation indicated that they would need to increase their fee by nine dollars and thirty-six cents per year. The yard waste cart option that we talked about, right now, the cost for the subscription of that service, yeah.
Why only those three did you get quotes from? Are they, are they the, I don't even know, I don't know, we have more than that? Are those the three most prevalent, too? Are those the only three that can use it?
No. We started with them because those are the garbage contracts that we have in place with, with the communities that we manage their garbage contracts. So what I would look for, you guys, if you could provide input, you guys have Walter Sanitation?
Enaspen.
Enaspen, okay. So that would be the next step, is reaching out. We kind of have a framework now of, you know, if anybody said twenty dollars, we'd think, okay, why were these three resident, or you know, why were these three able to do it for this price? Or, or on the flip side, if somebody said two dollars a year, we might have conversations about that, too, so.
Is there, since it's sort of related to the information on the separate collection with regards to the, to the two options and additional truck services, is there any recommendation or advisement from Metro Waste Authority based on population or geography or any of that, as to how many garbage haulers the community should have? I know there's other factors to take into account there, but.
Ooh, I don't know if I want to stop or not.
Leading question.
Very leading.
Um.
Okay, well.
No, that's fine.
I apologize, it's Michael McCoy, the interim executive director for Metro Waste Authority, but that is a, a very sensitive topic, city by city, of whether you're allowing one hauler with a single stream or multiple haulers in your city. So we would certainly sit down with you or staff and go through some different scenarios and help you with that decision, if that's something you're looking at, or give you kind of a roadmap of what other cities are using, like size or, or larger, but that would be a, a separate issue for this council to decide with staff.
I do think it's, well.
For your back information, about twelve or fourteen years ago, we had a community meeting on that subject, and of those attendants, they were extremely boisterous of not going to a single hauler.
Nora, am I even remembering that, too? Maybe some best practices from other communities as to somewhere in the middle might be.
There is certainly something you can utilize Metro Waste Authority for, that's part of our, our mission and our job, is to lend that information to our member communities. So we'd be happy to circle around with your staff.
Yeah, I recall what Dan's talking. Yeah, I recall what Dan's talking about, and I, for one, think competition's a good thing, so I, or the merrier might be.
So the yard waste cart option is a little bit different, again, for that very reason here in Polk City. Right now, the cart service through Metro Waste Authority is a hundred and five dollars a year. Actually, that cart cost is wrong for Polk City. I think you guys give that to your residents to encourage the program perhaps, but that a hundred and five dollar revenue is going to Metro Waste Authority. In the instance where residents could have the option for a second cart, that revenue would go to the hauler, since it's a just contracted. In other cities that have a contracted In other cities that have a contracted hauler, that second cart revenue actually goes to the city. So ultimately, those are the three pillars of information that we've been working on. Like I indicated earlier, the goal for this evening and conceding the information is just to give you a little bit more information. Hopefully, you've getting the wheels turning, you're formulating some questions. If you have any of those questions that you want to ask now, I'd be happy to take a stab at those. But ultimately, the, the goal is to provide some input for Dan, so that when he has the opportunity to vote in a few months, he knows where you guys stand. Director?
Well, one of the things you had mentioned was the survey you had done, and I think I brought that up once, maybe at a finance committee meeting, about that's availability to us, because I would like to be able to get that posted on our own website for a few weeks to try to garner more input from our citizens.
Sure, I can...
You don't want the results, you want the raw...
I want the raw survey for them to be able to fill out, yes.
That's a great idea, I can, I can get that. Any other questions or comments, or...
Well, I think the one unique thing from our Polk City is, is clearly us having our own waste, you know, yard waste disposal area. I don't think that any other community in Polk County has that's open year-round. I mean, some do it, storm cleanup, or, you know, Christmas time, they'll take Christmas trees or whatever. But we've got ours open year-round, and we spend to the tune of $40-ish, right? $40,000 out of taxpayer money, you know, to have that, to have that facility open, to have it available year-round, for that matter. And it, you know, it's clearly, that's a nice service that we have, that passing additional cost on to the individual, you know, homeowner for, for additional collection, I don't know. I mean, we've got that facility out there that I personally want to do everything we can to continue to have that service available for our residents. I know, I think that you would agree, we've done a good job of cleaning that up over the past several years. Yeah, please.
And this is not something we're asking, you know, if you choose to, okay, if we're Metro Waste Authority to allow landfill, or the landfill to take yard waste, you can continue to do whatever your plan is here in Polk City. We're looking for a unified voice on Metro Waste. It's kind of its mispurpose, right, is to have all of the city members to need to kind of move forward with one message. And so I think it'd still be the same message, because you would be unique, you know, either way. Either way, you're still unique in that case, and we could help you with messaging in a different fashion. But, so we wouldn't want you to change anything out here with that, with your drop. You might open it up that individuals can put it in their, in their garbage and co-mingle, that you continue your, your drop site as well. And Des Moines has a very similar, but not as generous, uh, option as you all as well.
And lastly, I did include a couple worksheets for you all. It's kind of a good flow to figure out what maybe you currently pay for yard waste, or what your neighbors with a different hauler, with different garbage practices has, and kind of helps you do like a little bit of a comparison as much as we can, so.
And Councilman Lane, we can share that with you as well, to put on your website.
Yeah.
Do that.
Anything else we can...
Well, I'd like to thank you both for coming out and sharing this information with us. Had a good turnout in the audience to hear it as well, so.
Thank you for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Item four, Carla Mattson to discuss recent snow ordinance parking tickets with council. No Carla, correct? Okay. Item A under that, optional council action. She still needs to pay her tickets.
We don't need to take any action.
Perfect. Okay. Item five, Bill Wells to discuss condition of backyard with council.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Bill Wells. I currently live at 1816 West Waconta Avenue. House is still there, right, Steve?
It was my left hand.
Currently, I live at 1816 West Waconta. I want to publicly thank Gary Mahanna. He's been very helpful and very professional for the last, I think, eight years, helping us not, uh, go overboard with this problem, dealing with this eight-year adventure. I also want to thank Ron Anderson, who on Bill Sharp's request, came out and looked at what I call the Polk City's newest attraction, the crater on West Avenue, West Waconta Avenue, and also for not falling in when you were there, because it's a, it's a dangerous situation. We know this first slide. We got a few quick slides. This is actually the ravine behind Steve's house, Steve Hammond. And that's, although our ravine was deeper when, uh, when we first moved there, it basically looked like that. Next slide, please. This is what's called the bubbler. Polk City, City Polk City put that in in early 2009, I believe. The Hammond's have added the extra golf ball and the pop cans there, but that's the bubbler where the water goes into, and then when it overflows, it goes down the ravine again. Next slide is actually the, you see the green pipe coming out of it? That's the overflow pipe. We'll come back to this slide, but that's overflow coming out of the bubbler. This is part of our backyard. As you can see, it's starting to head south. This is a view, a view from below. That's Steve's house on the left, our house in the, in the middle, and Bill Sharps, Bill and Connie Sharps on the right. You can see those big trees are just dropping straight down as the ravine moves away. Okay, this is a, this is about a 100-year-old oak tree that dropped on November 30th this past year. It dropped down about eight feet. Now it's leaning to the, to the, to the left from our deck, leaning to the left at about a 45-degree angle. But you can see the sloughing of the slope behind it, the two different huge, I mean, it's like a California mudslide that's going down. I'm not sure what the white object is, it might be a Bernie Sanders supporter or something. The whole, the whole ravine is going down. That's a, this is another view from standing below looking up. And I believe that's Steve's house door left, and it'd be my house straight, straight, uh, straight away, so. Got one more. That's the oak tree again. Okay, that was the, can we go back to number two slide? That's the, I don't know what the toxic stuff coming out of that is, but that's the overflow pipe. What the solution is, and it's hard to see here, but to build a rock dam here, I've had several different people suggest this, and that's, that's what I'm going with right now. Build a rock dam here, this is the overflow pipe, so the bubbler is right back here. Put in another intake pipe here, drop it down, and get it to, um, stream level. Get it to the stream level at the bottom of the ravine, take it out and head it towards Seagull Lake. So, you know, right now, we've got all that dropage in the water. If we put a, an intake valve, we can, we can... And then, the bigger part is, after we get the culvert in there, and some people have suggested it'd be a 24-inch culvert, then we can put dirt over top of it, and, and that would put pressure on both sides of that ravine, and the, you know, the dirt would, would keep it from eroding further. So that's the suggestion so far. Any questions on that? All right. You know, I know there's, that's a, it's a storm sewer easement, right there, a waterway easement for the city. And the city has storm sewer easements. My understanding is, the storm sewer easements are for the purpose of permitting the city the right to construct, reconstruct, repair, enlarge, and maintain storm sewers. But gentlemen, this one needs repair. You know, I would hope that the city council would do the right thing. This development, development was approved in 1995. There's a lot of beautiful homes along this development, and it's created a huge tax base for the city. But it's also created this erosion problem that's going on now for nearly a decade. Any questions? Bill, you got any?
Well, we got, in my backyard, we've got an area there now that's probably about three or four feet wide and about, about deep is, you can see that, that old corner is going to come out there pretty soon. You probably, you sure, you probably seen that when you was down there when we were on? In my yard, down in my yard, you probably saw that ravine that's cutting across there on that point?
Yeah.
That's about three, what, three or four feet wide, and then I don't know how deep it is, but you can see it's cutting across the end of it there. And there's so much sand in that bank. You know, it's not like the clay that's up by our house, it's sand, and as the water comes down through there, it just erodes it out, eats it all out. It's a lot of trees. Bill, I think it's lost, what, 10 or 12 trees?
No, he is, yeah, he's...
My line goes down that creek and then back up. Got 230 feet on that side, so that, that area's fell off there too.
I know it doesn't necessarily matter, but I'd be curious, has, has anybody ever told you or us, is that just a natural erosion, or is it because of the way we ran water and graded, or do we even know?
It's the water off the street that comes down there.
Is it not that?
I mean, you know, all, all I can tell you is, all I can tell you is, is I've had several different engineering firms, you know, give opinions, and I can get that to you. But just from a practical standpoint, I mean, that ravine was there for, what, 15 million years? And then the city started dumping water in there, and now we have this. I mean, common sense is going to tell me...
No, I just, what I guess what I'm getting at is, whatever we do, you know, hopefully we're correcting the first problem that caused it at the same time. If it's, if it's our direction of water, and not only put a bigger intake or, or fill a hole, that, kind of like you mentioned with the water, the dirt going back and forth, try and fix the original problem, at the same time as correcting what we...
Well, you know, the, the original engineering was done by a firm out of Urban Dale. And, and they had the water dropping off, and just at the edge of Steve and our yard, dropping off on, way up high, and it would just rush down, and that started, that started it. Now, the city, Polk City came in in 2009 and changed the direction of that, you know, made it go 90 degrees, down the ravine, dropped it down, put that bubbler in, dropped it down, and put, put some rock in there. But there's 18 houses that, that send water down those, that, that water pipe. And, you know, some people say, well, it's going to erode anyway. No. I mean, that, that ravine's been there forever, and all of a sudden, since 1997, it started to revolve, erode like this, well, really since 2008. And it's gotten much worse since this last November. I mean, it's just, and, and Bill's right, that soil is, is, is really, really sandy. And it's, it's just not going to hold. There's got to be a culvert put in, in my estimation, a culvert put in, and, and so we can get pressure on both sides of that ravine, or it's just going to keep going. I mean, you know, it's just, it's obvious.
Well, I was just going to say some history, and I think it was in 2008, that the city went up there and spent considerable funds in there, and where the water comes off of Ugestor Park Drive, we put in two 90s to slow down the flow in this bubbler. So it's not like we totally ignored it. And I agree with you that, that ravine has been there forever, right? I remember hunting mushrooms up there long before you guys lived here. And yes, that storm sewer coming up, we would not have the storm sewer coming down on that street had houses not been built there. You follow me?
No.
Well, it would still been a cornfield. It would have still been a cornfield.
Well, yeah, exactly. Yeah. I mean, you know, I built a house here in good faith that it was, you know, it was not going to do this. I mean, I, I think the original design was wrong, because you're supposed to drop surface water at stream level. And it was dropped, you know, 10, 12 feet above stream level. And then, and then we did get it turned 90 degrees, but it's still, it's still not at stream level. Anyway, the only way we can fix a ravine is put a culvert in it. I mean, that's...
What bothers me more than anything is how much money we've spent on engineering to approve another engineer's plan that was faulty. Laura, do you want to comment on that at all?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There were memos that were circulated, I believe, to you, Mr. Wells, and to city council, and to Gary, uh, back in 2008, and then a follow-up one that I wrote in February. And the purpose of those easements is to provide for an unobstructed, uh, path for natural drainage water to flow in that natural ravine. So that has collected storm water from a larger area historically, and continues to collect that water. And then there is an easement that goes along the mutual side property lines, I believe, between Hammond and yourselves, where there is a city facility, a pipe which collects water from that subdivision area and brings it down that drainage way. And that easement is for that storm sewer pipe. Both of these easements allow for the city to come in and maintain or remove obstructions. But the purpose of the easement along the drainage way is not that the city has to maintain this, it's that the homeowner doesn't obstruct the natural drainage path, and I think that's, and maybe Amy can comment on this, but that's part of the state law, is that you have to provide a path for that natural water. I wasn't around when that subdivision was built in the 90s to tell you exactly what the natural drainage area of that is. But year to year, how much rain we get fluctuates. When you develop, you change how much water is runoff, and when you pipe it, you make it faster, but you don't change how much it rains. So there is more water, but putting in a bubbler actually slows that water down to mimic the original velocity. And it's the velocity, and sometimes the quantity, that, that contribute to the runoff. What we have here is an unstable situation, and I know these ravines have been here forever, but they're in a natural state of erosion. The slopes are steep, we have sandy soils in some areas, and those are very vulnerable to erosion. And once they start to move, they keep moving, and then they move in these big catastrophic events like, like you saw here. We have pictures where the opposite side of the bank had moved before then, but we don't know if it started moving before 1990s, or exactly when it started moving, and exactly what it's related to. But we also know that there's downspouts that were draining into the side area, and perhaps a sump pump discharge?
We have a sump pump. A sump overflow, but as far as I know, it's never had water.
All Long Islandians, it never run.
Well, I, that's what I had heard in, or some information that was passed on to me. But I do know that there's some piped downspouts that run out in that area, and there's some pipe discharges and drains, if you can see in those areas.
I'm sure 18 houses along that street have, have the same thing, you know? Plus coming off their rooftops and their driveways. I'm sure that, you know...
But I guess the question is, the, the drainage that's coming from that pipe, and the additional water that's created by that runoff, which that factor is not really extremely higher than it was as a cornfield. Hence, hence, for a long time, city, the city did not have a detention ordinance. Hence, for a long time, the city did not have a detention ordinance for single-family residential, because that factor isn't greatly larger than the natural condition. But the city mitigated the storm water coming from the city pipe in 2008, 2009.
Agreed.
And at that time, we also advised you to look into a number of improvements on your private property.
Gary, can we intercept right here? My email to you, when I got to see that, what's the date on that, 2008? I told you, I said, "Thank you, I never saw this report before." And then you were on vacation, and you got back to me and said, "She had it in her email to you." And I said, "Well, I must have, I thought we had fixed the problem in 2008. If I did get it, you know, I put it somewhere." And that was the first time, this year was the first time I saw that report. And there was federal money to do the improvement at that time. And we probably would've done it at that time. But, you know, I had never seen an out, you know, I never saw that report, so.
I believe I hand-delivered that to you, Bill, at a meeting that was at your house?
It came later. Oh, wait, you might, that's what, yeah, you're right. You said that you might've given it to me that day, or you said you gave it to me. I don't, I've never found it since then, 'cause when I saw it, I went, "Wow, this is some good information. I wish I would've had it then." And I didn't have it, but.
Kathleen has an email from you, Gary, saying that you had had a meeting with yourself, Mel Lentz, your attorney, and Mike, as well as Milk Budsky, who's a local geotechnical engineer of, does widely respected on September 4th of 2008. And that was after we, just shortly after we had drafted this memo. We weren't in attendance at that meeting.
May I say something?
Sure.
They started moving stuff off to the, you know, you've got that land across from us, that field. They started moving things in today. What's gonna happen to them when they build that up with houses?
Real quick, can we get your name and address for the record?
Conny Sharp. 1812 West Belkanto. They moved in like a trailer today. And I'm assuming they're going to start working on that property, right? And they will have the other side of that drainage. That's going to be, have anybody looked into that?
Which property?
I don't know if Matt owns it.
Would they, would they?
Oh, Flat 3.
Yeah.
Flat 3 hasn't been.
No, I, yeah.
That's what I'm concerned about too, if they're going to have problems later on also.
What's the, do we have an approximate cost to rectify this?
Well, so I think where I live, on Prairie Ridge Court, very similar situation. I've got, I think from these pictures, even a steeper slope behind my place. I've got an easement in between my neighbor. I know it takes, I mean, the plus is, to your point, sump pumps don't run, right, because of the drainage. But the downside is the erosion. And I just know it takes constant maintenance. It sounds to me like the city was covered in 2008 with the steps that were taken. If it didn't get to you, then maybe that's something to look in. I know it's a concern to look at this stuff and see what's changing. And it certainly needs to be addressed. I don't know what the city's place in that is.
Well, I, you know, that's still, that pipe, the overflow is still, it's not at stream level. It's still up high. You know, I think the original engineering was wrong, and I still don't think this is right. But that, you know, that's a moot point. For somebody to say, though, that it was gonna naturally erode like that, the coverage area above that bubbler is about the area of this room here. And why, you know, if you had a six-inch rain, it wasn't gonna change, 'cause it hadn't changed for, you know, all of time. And to say that, you know, it could've naturally done that is, I don't understand that.
The change over the past five years is marked. I mean, it's significant. You can't, I can't believe that naturally, in a five-year period, the side that, the opposite side that shows where the tree has come down, is completely washed away. The retaining wall on their side has completely fallen. This has been over a course of a few years since the, you know, so-called solution was put in. It's marked, you know? I understand, evolving over time, things are gonna happen naturally. Over a five-year period, things, it's starting to fall into the stream there. Something's not right, but, I mean, it's not from.
You're gonna have problems now.
I mean, it's pretty, it's noticeable to the naked eye. I mean, I don't know if Ron, I don't know if you've looked at it prior to recently, but the change over the past few years.
Come on out.
Well, I was up there the other day.
Yeah, Ron was up there.
But he's saying that I look at it prior to that. And I'm saying I haven't been in that ditch since before there were houses up there.
No, that's what I'm saying.
I was up there before there were houses up there, and there was a ditch up there.
Amy, did you have something you wanna say?
You know, I'm listening to the engineers, and I don't hear anything that indicates that it's anything that the city has done between 2008, well, prior to 2008, and definitely since 2008 to cause it. You know, if that, if there is an engineer that tells us that it is our responsibility, then I think we have to look at it. But at this point in time, and we've had our engineers spend a lot of time looking at it, and there's nothing that I have heard or seen that indicates or leads me to believe that at this point in time, it's something that's the city's responsibility.
What I keep going back to is what I mentioned earlier, I guess it's not rhetorical, but we've had problems on TCI streets, we've had problems in the backyards of Prairie Ridge, now here. We spent an awful lot of money on engineering, whether it's our city engineer, whether it's somebody else's engineer that did this project. Is there never any liability for bad engineering? Or do we just keep saying, "Boy, I don't know that happened"? I mean, that's, that's the question I have.
Well, excuse me. I appreciate what you're saying. And our neighbors to the east have just spent literally millions of dollars fixing ditches. Well, they have a lot more money than we have. And I think moving forward, that we have to, as a council, get some laws in there and some ordinances that don't allow, either just don't allow houses built on a ditch, or make them do something that works, make the developers do something that works. 'Cause everybody wants to point fingers at the city and the city council. And I'm not an engineer, and we first admit that. I feel like this responsibility ultimately falls back on the developer.
Right. And I'm afraid what they're gonna say is, "Well, it just happened to be best for whatever your bond amount is."
Well, yeah, I admit that, but I mean, moving forward with developments from now on, is we get some language in there that doesn't allow this. 'Cause I, you know, that's a problem was created by a developer. The developers have got their money and moved on, and now the rest of us in town are being asked to pay for it.
But do we know that, isn't that what you're saying, though? We don't know that it was a problem created by a developer?
Well, I can tell you that we don't have any evidence that it's the city's responsibility at this point in time. Whether the developers at fault, that's a completely different issue.
And I can't argue that, whether it was caused by the development or not, but nobody complained when it was a cornfield. Nobody, I don't ever remember anybody coming down here and saying, "Hey, my ditch is falling in by my cornfield."
Mike, have you looked at that? Do you have any?
Well, yeah.
Have you been up recently?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. There's a bunch that all against.
Yeah, it's a difficult situation. We've had them all in town, and all I can tell you is, what we've done in the past is, well, on these easements, is it's the property owner's responsibility, and we've had numerous ones, more than just what have been mentioned here tonight.
That's what I wanna say, is, thanks, Bill, and Steve, and neighbors for coming in. It's, this is, since I've been on council anyways, come up several times, the overland water easements happen in our development as well, and it continues to happen. And we have put a lot of time into trying to make those solutions. And I think that, to Amy's point, if there's some way to say, "It was, it never should have this much." I mean, what Steve says, I mean, it's maybe pretty obvious it's not just supposed to have the water. But that's not, as Ron said, it's not up to us to say that, because we're just trying to do what's, make solutions, provide solutions. So this is always a difficult situation, because we're kinda sitting here. We start doing, we try to just do it out of the nice, and there's so many others that need the same that we've, you have to take a stand. And so it's a really precarious situation. Not saying what's right or what's wrong, but what you say about the engineers moving forward, that doesn't help you.
Yeah, but that's.
Right? So please know that we're not, we're just really, it's a, I had neighbors, you know, I've visited several times, and it's, there wasn't a solution, aside from try to do better. You know, try to stop the erosion, but that, again, to the city, we could just be doing that all day. And so it's a tough position.
Gary, what were you gonna add?
It's, Ron made a point there that staying away from ravines, unstable soils, and that type of thing. The cop plan that's going on right now identifies that as an area where we should probably put some rules and regulations together to keep this from happening. So chances are, this will be a rule or ordinance in the future.
Well, and something that nobody's talked about here, but I know it's a factor, is the core of engineers and how much water is sent down on their ground. I know that that's a huge factor on all developments.
We don't wanna get involved with those guys.
No, well, you're right, but we have no choice. We're surrounded by them, and they have a, they have a big say in what goes on, what we can or can't do. We have to get permission from them before we put poles in the ground out of our sports complex.
Really, not too long ago, maybe it was longer than I remember, time flies. But an issue with the roading bank here, I believe, was hurt soaks at the time. What did we ever do with that one?
They took, the property owner took care of it. We facilitated them getting a grant that helped, a federal grant that helped with a piece of it. But they spent, Gary and I were trying to think, close to $90,000 out of their own pocket to take care of it.
True, yeah. That was a.
They told me that that federal program has since gone away.
And it just takes for a portion of it.
Okay. If you're interested, if you wanna, I can send you my contacts, I can show you what is behind my place and some of my neighbors. Again, I don't know that that probably addresses your greater concern, but.
You think I did that?
It's just gonna blow up, though.
No, it is gonna blow up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your concern.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it. Nothing to do under A? Amy? Under A, I don't need to do anything. Item six, Davis and Tyler Street intersection reconstruction project. Item A, consider motion to approve resolution 2016-18, ordering construction of certain public improvements and fixing dates for public hearing thereon and taking bits. Mike, do you wanna talk to this, or do we just need to move on?
You should have copies of the plans as in your agenda packet. The cost is expected, construction cost with contingency is expected to be in $162,638. And the resolution that you'll be looking at will set several things in motion. One will be the setting a public hearing. And the public hearing.
It would be on April 11th.
April 11th, thank you. April 11th. We will have bits due April 5th if this is approved by council, and we will be bringing the parent little bidder to council after they've had their public hearing. And we'll get further direction from the council at that time.
This project has been identified as a priority?
Yes, it has, yep.
Couple different times, yeah. I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
DeBorac?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven, consideration and possible action on last, best, and final collective bargaining agreement offer.
Based on our discussion earlier, I'll make a motion to reject the last, best, and final offer and proceed to our retreat.
Second. Roll call.
DeBorac?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet? Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item eight, consider motion to approve continuation of multi-year contract of total quality for mowing and trimming services of city properties with a cost of $2,667 for each mowing cycle, along with fertilizer and weed control at a cost of $12,240 for the entire season of the fertilizer program. Mike?
This is a continuation of last year, actually two years' worth of contracts from total quality. They've held their price now, this'll be the third year. Now, when I say that, I wanna bring it out, I know I wrote a memo, but we have added parkland, so the total price is going up, but the per-acre price from three years, yeah, two years ago is still in effect. So it's the same per-acre price, but we've added, so that's really what the addition has been here. But I would recommend their approval for this year.
Salute.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes.
DeBorac?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item nine, review concept of neighborhood citizen group, discussion of approval of concept and process to appoint members.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has been an idea that has been circulated around since about October 2015. And a meeting with Ken Thornton, council member Sarchet, and myself, we came up with some ideas, and we came up with a neighborhood areas that could be part of various different groups or neighborhoods. And we ended up with six neighborhoods and possibly one person from the chamber as a possibility of putting together a neighborhood citizen group or an NCG. The idea behind it is to obtain input and consensus on areas that are affecting neighborhoods and as a city as a whole. It's set up to be a platform for looking at different opinions. We saw a perfect example of how this could be used tonight with the co-mingling of yard waste as well as garbage pickup. This could be something that could be sent back to that committee and asked for some input. The idea is that that committee then would, that person would talk to their neighbors and would gather consensus from their neighborhood and continually work then from the grassroots up. I know that Ken Thornton and council member Sarchet have put some thought to this, and I just gave a quick overview of this tonight. The intent here would be that if this is something that council wants to do, we can go ahead and appoint people to this. They would have to come from those neighborhoods that are identified in your council packet, and see how we can start working this group to make it so it's another tool we have in our correspondence and communication with citizens of Polk City.
Ken?
Ron? Anything else?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a great idea and I think we're going to have meetings of quarterly nature. I don't think we want to be too often, but it's a way to get consensus, you know, almost like continue to improve the process from the citizens to you. And there's been things that could be handled in those kind of groups like the garbage co-mingling aspect and also maybe, you know, that neighborhood group could at least listen to them and make some suggestions or suggestions could got made there, yeah. So, I think it's a good idea for communities to get together and for different neighborhoods to get together and give you guys input.
You have anything to add, Ron?
The only idea, a lot of the similar sentiments, it's just another avenue for a few more people to have their ear in the ground and what's going on and how people see things going. You know, I see some additional benefits of, you know, increased neighborhood cohesiveness and, you know, helping welcome people to town and some of those things if it ultimately has legs. I think it'll be key to, you know, leverage Jake and some other folks to get the word out on this and get people, get input and kind of get it off and running, but yeah. Much else to add?
Well, I think it's a great idea. One of the things we've heard for years, or at least I have, is how people don't have an avenue to talk to us and believe it or not, I have people telling me they're nervous to come and talk to us, which I can't believe in, might be nervous to talk to me. But I think this gives people an outlet without coming to a formal meeting and have to approach us, so I think, it's definitely a good move. I think that people will participate and just, I think it's where we need to be.
Yeah, I think we just have a completely open forum. I mean, it's not necessarily complying to those people that are on the committee. I mean, everybody is welcome and I see that it's a public meeting, so...
Yeah, again, the, one thing that sparks, so Ken would sort of continue in his role as the chairperson, for lack of a better term, kind of just coordinating those quarterly meetings and, you know, I don't think his role, quite honestly, would change too much. He'd just have some lieutenants and, yeah, we'd go from there.
All right. Also, just a quick comment, I think this would be great when we're looking at, I always think about parks and how we're identifying the needs and wants of different neighborhoods, how much things get used in specific neighborhoods. We don't always know, we, oh, we think we saw a lot of people out there, but it's a way to identify the needs of those areas as well. And if there's things that aren't right, we can talk, you know, just bring it forward in that non-formal way like you talked about. I think it's, I think it's a great idea.
I know that one of the things that was extremely frustrating to the council last time was the bond issue and bond vote. This may have been a vehicle where you could go into neighborhood groups and say, what do you want? I mean, what do you want to see? What would you like to see? What are your dreams? You know, what would you like to see? And not that it would be perfect and not, you know, it may fail in other bond vote, but at least you'd be closer to what the folks want to see and that.
Well, I want to tag on to what I said earlier. I think it's still important that we as council people remain as approachable as possible and want people to know that this isn't a cushion between us and them. That this is just a way to further the process and make it speedier to get to it, but we're still very approachable with the council and nobody should ever be nervous to come and talk to us.
Right, and I guess the key thing there is somebody has a, you know, legitimate concern that you can give them our information and we can reach out to them rather than waiting till every quarter to have this conversation with them. Sometimes these people need to be talked to, you know, pretty promptly.
I think it'd be a great idea, too, for the council on a rotating basis or however you guys want to set it up, to have the members come to the meeting. Now, maybe not, you know, maybe it does make people off.
You can fill out your first couple of meetings and see how they go.
Yes, yeah, I agree.
Ken's just saying that because he was threatened with me as a liaison.
At least then he only has to deal with you like once every few months or a couple years. All right, do we need to do anything on that?
Well, I have approval of the concept. If we go ahead and approve the concept, what we need to do then is bring back names for the six neighborhoods and run off of the chamber to get this thing started, or the business community, maybe what I should call it instead of chambers.
Well, could we solicit names for a period of time and come back? I don't, I mean, again, I'd like to get this out there and see...
I don't want to hand select anybody, I don't know.
We want them to be, not feel like it's a burden, it's a, it's something that we can use as a motive.
Something they want to get into.
Because it's only going to be as good as the execution and unfortunately, you're not going to be able to herd people in, so they have to want to really do that and...
You want a true cross section of the community? I don't know.
So, maybe a letter of intent?
I don't know how, how many people within the last few months have approached me and said they'd like to get involved in the city at some stage and this would be, this would be a good place to start.
Yeah. So, I don't know, that we gave you very clear...
Do I need a motion or do I just, everybody shaking their head yes and we're...
Let's go ahead and approve the concept and what we'll do is, we'll push out through social media, some information on this and we'll basically just ask people to, if they're interested in this, give us a letter, an email, something that shows that they have interest. What we're going to ask is for an address so we can, I guess for lack of anything else, coordinate where they are on this map so we can get every neighborhood with a representative.
Sure. So, do you need a motion as to what you're asking for?
Just for the concept, I think, to...
Somebody want to make it?
Make a motion to what? To follow through on the concept, to further?
Approve the concept.
Approve the concept.
Second. Take your pick, roll call.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarge?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven, mayor's report, couple of quick things. Well, thank Mr. Anderson for coming for me a couple of weeks ago while I was out, my grandfather passing away. I try not to miss meetings and I appreciate you, your willingness to cover at the very last minute for me on that.
Very stressful.
I appreciate you being here for that, too. I made a presentation at Polk City Women here a couple of weeks ago, well received. I really enjoy getting out to those various clubs and organizations, so I'll offer, if there's anybody else who wants it, I'd be happy to come and kind of give a little state of the city speech. It's a lot of fun getting out and talking to various groups. I think I've done three or four so far this year, so. Good opportunity to get another good feel for what's going on in the community. Couple of weeks ago, we approved the Big Creek Bike Ride and I know I mentioned, Dan, that that was a conflict with Lobster Fest and that we talked about that. Before I got here tonight, there was a meeting that took place between the Chamber and the Legion and they're going to coexist. They're going to have it the same night, they both, they're in communication, they're going to work it together. So, they're both, the Chamber went and met with them this evening and it went very well and by all accounts, everybody's on board with it. So, the Chamber Bike Ride will still be the same night as Lobster Fest, but they're going to co-promote, I guess is kind of the word I heard. So, just wanted to, I know I had mentioned that that date was possibly going to change and I wanted to make sure to let you know. And in other Chamber news, tomorrow night is the Chamber Awards, Business Person of the Year, Sean Corner, and Citizen of the Year, Krista Bowersock. So, congratulations to those guys. Good group of people this year. If you get a chance, it's up at Holder's. Don't remember what time, five o'clock or something along that line, but if you get to, get a chance. All right, that's all I have. Council report, Dan Lane.
Yeah, I just would like to extend a thank you to everybody for allowing the time for Metro Waste Authority to come in and present their case tonight. You know, it's something that's been highly debated for over a year at our board meetings and we're really interested in the input from the public, so anytime you're out talking to people and you might want to mention this and as soon as I get that, we'll get that survey so you can put it up on the website and stuff, so. It'd make my job easier if I know what the city wants, but we are unique, I really don't think it's going to affect us much either way. I just might make it more convenient for some of our citizens that have smaller yard waste and not have to take it out to a city shop. I'm not promoting one way or the other, other than I spent 20 years as an energy person and I'm all for converting waste into electricity to power homes, so.
Anything else?
That's all I have for you.
Okay, have nothing this evening? Mr. Mordi? Based on our previous discussions here tonight, is it possible to have, I don't know who the expert is within the city on grants, do some research as far as soil erosion grants, just to see if there's anything lurking out there that would come into play with that?
We'll look at that a week, or probably about a month ago.
Or preservation, whatever they call it.
Yep, and there was nothing out there, but we'll give it another review.
Thanks. Anything else?
A couple of things I had congratulate Sean and Krista as well, I saw that email today. I did hear of some social media hubbub on the 415 construction. Are we confident that that message has got out of there, got out now that there won't be any extended closures and all that?
I responded accordingly.
Yeah, nice job. Is there anything else that we can do from the city's perspective? Not that you haven't done a good job of getting that out, but clearly they're right there.
Those websites are always so accurate, aren't they? I know. Had like two people text me, said, you need to do something.
If it's on the computer, it has to be true.
It'll be true.
I saw a cat singing a piano not too long ago.
A neighborhood LinkedIn said you can't believe everything you read on the internet. We did have a Four Seasons meeting last week, I think we've got some new stuff in addition coming this year, so I'm excited about that, July 15th and 16th.
So, calendars. Be a parade on the day of the 16th, I heard. Ron?
Not too much, I just want to thank staff at all levels, through the hard work that's been going on. There's lots of stuff happening in Polk City right now and everybody seems to be working hard to move things forward, working together as a team, which is what we definitely need. We need team players and I think we have them to keep things moving forward and I'd just like to thank staff for that at this time. And that's all I have.
Any other council discussion? City administrator's report?
I'm going to make mine very quick tonight, Mr. Mayor. HomeServe has sent out a letter just recently, I'm going to say within the past week. We have gotten quite a few inquiries on this. The letter was written somewhat different from the previous time and we are working with Home Serve for future ones that they're not going to be so in-your-face, if you will, and hope that we've made some end roads. I will be providing a update as to where we are with Home Serve and the number of people that they have signed up. I will tell you that this last letter really got a lot of people's attention.
To say the least. I did receive an email from a resident who was thinking it was a scam, so, anyway.
Well, I just wanted to ask, since you brought that up, I had some calls asking me, is this something that's sponsored by the city? Is the city doing this? Did you hear that? I told them, no, we contacted them, got it started, but no, it's not.
There was concern we were getting kicked back on it, too.
Yeah, and then why is the city letterhead on there?
Right. They just used our logo, they didn't...
Yeah.
So, we're not getting kicked back on any of it, please. Totally on their own. But would you encourage people to look at it? Anything else?
That's all I have this time, sir.
Attorney's report?
Nothing, you're heard.
Engineer?
Nothing.
Nothing, lucky you. Public works?
I just wanted to say, the street sweepers were in town last week, so you probably noticed that. Our crews are out already fixing main break areas, whether it's grounds or curbs or concrete, whatever, you know, was destroyed with that. We're doing some other repairs on the bike trail along Broadway here coming up this week, but we're already out there doing those things, so.
You're saying we're done, right? I can put my snowblower away, let me help you.
I can say that.
All right, just checking. I wanted somebody's, I wanted somebody's expert opinion on that.
We're just moving forward on spring activities.
Thanks for moving forward, Mike. Technology? Finance? Fire department?
I just have, I just have one thing, daily operations or everything's good at the fire department. We did start doing kind of a courtesy fire inspection, if you will, in some local businesses and so I say fire inspection loosely, but really it's just a courtesy so that if and when we decide that we want to start an inspection program, they've had plenty of time to understand where they might be in violation and so we've gone out to, our fire marshal Jason Cuthbert has gone out to a few local businesses and again, really just given them a full walkthrough as if we were doing a full inspection and letting them know where they're, where they would be in violation, should we choose to enforce that at some point in time. So, we maybe got the cart before the horse just a little bit on that. We are hoping to come to council with a kind of a presentation and a plan, how we want to move forward in future years with that, but just in case you're anything, that's what we're doing. It's, at this point, it's, like I said, really just more of an educational process so they at least know long ahead of time before there would be any enforced violations, so.
And I, for one, thank you for that. I think it's a safety issue and that's all. What I've heard, that's all you're doing, is you're telling people how they can make their businesses or establishments safer and it's appreciated.
So, hopefully at some point, we'll be able to come to you with a formal presentation and kind of lay out what we'd like to do going forward, so, but that's what's going on now.
Anything else? Police department?
Just a couple of things here, let me brief and have you keep going. In the package, you have copies of the monthly activity report, which rolled from under your west. Do you have any questions about that that we wanted to answer before you? Second report that you have is a traffic enforcement activity report that is on the heels of a citizen complaint of speeding in 300 block Blue Street. I think back in January, we had that, we responded with a survey. Councilman Anderson asked that we do some additional enforcement on that area, which we've done. And the report that you have there, the officers over a 10-day period in February conducted stationary radar enforcement setups at the dates and the times, listed the reports sorted by date and then by time. And if you'll note, under each time summary there, there's a summary of the number of vehicles that went through and the minimum and maximum speeds. Bottom line is, they monitored 152 vehicles, the average speed was 24.6 miles an hour, the maximum speed was 38 miles an hour, it's a 25 mile an hour residential speed zone and one side case, no issues. Any questions?
Did that kind of cover what you were after on that?
Yeah, and if nothing else, having the presence up there of the fire, of the police department, excuse me, I think is huge just to have it there and people seeing it up there and now hopefully they'll be more aware.
Absolutely, we'll continue to monitor that from time to time in addition to the regular patrol shoot there, so if there are any further complaints, we'll appear and do it again.
We got some numbers, too, because I think there was some, you know, people are doing 50 miles an hour down through there on a regular basis concerns. Thanks. Library?
Yes, I wanted to thank the police department, Officer Matt and Officer Dan. They came and did a program today on stranger danger. We had 58 attend, which we felt was really good for spring break and by visiting with them, staff has come up with a few more programs that we're going to have the police department do for us. So, I wanted to give them a thank you for that. And that's all I have.
Perfect. Anything on the citizen liaison? Anything more than what we already talked about? Perfect. Ron, would you like to make?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
You know what?